Well, welcome you all to the this virtual meeting and of the Middleton City Council for May 19th, 2020, and I'm going to call the meeting to order, and the first item is the roll call.
President.
Susan.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Olsen.
She's muted, but she's here.
Uh, Talan.
Here.
Luke.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't hear. Yeah, Luke's here.
Okay. Uh, Wes.
President.
Graham. Graham, can you be ahead?
Here.
Uh, President, the line is open.
So Kathy, you're back?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm muted.
Yeah, I think, uh, okay, everybody present, so, um, I think, uh, how to participate in a Zoom meeting? And do you want to say anything about Mike? Or you think that we have gone over enough number of time?
Uh, well, let me go ahead and try. The, uh, the key is for people to mute so that we don't have sounds uh showing up airently while we're conducting the meeting. And then during, uh, comments from citizens present, those who want to make comments have up to three minutes called by the mayor. So far, we have two people who had signed up for that, Matt Flanagan and Katie Nelson. Uh, for city council members, you have the option to raise your hand, um, via Zoom. And if you do that, I will let the mayor know when I see that. And, um, for all else, for, for comments during the meeting, those are limited to staff and the elected officials.
Thank you, Mike. So the next item on the agenda is the comments from the citizen present, and it's limited to three minutes per speaker. I'm going to start with Matt Flanagan.
Thank you all very much for your time. Uh, my name is Matt Flanagan. I represent the Middleton Gator Swim Team. Uh, I'm an active board member. The COVID-19 pandemic has affected our schools, our clubs, our businesses, and our lives. We've all been affected in life-altering ways, and as such, are looking for some semblance of a new normal. The Middleton Gators have been supporting over 340 of Middleton's youth in developing swimming and social skills. We bring both community awareness of the Walter Baum and Aquatic Center and community pride as the Middleton Summer Swim Team. We support the pool financially by contributing for its use in hours when the pool is typically either closed or has lower attendance. We raise funds for Middleton Outreach Ministry through swim-a-thons and other donations. We provide teen scholarships for individuals that are unable to afford the cost of registration for the team. As we venture into the unknown for this summer, we request the opportunity to discuss how we can continue to provide this programming to the community based upon CDC, DHS, and WEDC guidance. We realize there are many restrictions that will be placed on how many swimmers we can have, not only in the pool, but at the pool as well. But we can understand how capacity at the WBAC is set, we may be able to find a way to successfully operate the Gators and benefit the pool. We've looked at restricted practice times, understanding that we may only be able to have one person per lane. Looking into limited days of practice per person to allow more kids to get in the water. And we're looking at limiting the number of swimmers we can effectively provide an opportunity to practice, subsequently limiting our team size. We spent the last 34 years building this program through community outreach and a culture of love and caring. We have an incredible coaching staff that, for the most part, comes back year after year to be part of another Gator summer. If we lose one year, we risk, we risk losing more than just eight weeks in the pool. We run the risk of kids, parents, and coaches forgetting the fun of summer swim and leaving the sport altogether. The Gators have a long tradition in Middleton. We don't want to lose the chance to keep the community connected, albeit in a different way than ever before. We've worked incredibly hard to create a fun, interactive, and engaging program for the Middleton community. We want to be able to maintain these relationships. While we don't know if there's a way that we can make it all work, we'd appreciate the, the chance to work together to make it a possibility for this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So the next one is Katie Nelson. Katie.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I got an email from my constituent Anne Smiley, and she requested that I read this statement on behalf of herself and of the Madison350.org Community Climate Solutions Team, her granddaughters, and all of us. Recently, we celebrated the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. Its founder, Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin, could not have anticipated the creative and innovative ways we celebrated his legacy during this time of COVID-19 pandemic. Yet his spirit endures, in his original words, those many years ago. Our goal is an environment of decency, quality, and mutual respect for all beings and all other creatures. An environment without ugliness, without poverty, without discrimination, without hunger, and without war. Our goal is a decent environment in its deepest and broadest sense. The current COVID-19 crisis may have complicated our lives, challenged our routines, but it has not conquered our human spirit. In many new ways, it has revived dormant and persistent hopes and convictions. My two granddaughters, one eight months old, the other four months old from birth, deserve a better, cleaner, greener world than I give, have given them. They need to run freely in green meadows. They need to breathe deeply. For us all, please continue to advocate for a well-reasoned, thoughtful, evidence-based, and scientifically sound approach in addressing COVID-19 as well as the climate crisis. Please do not be lured by pressure to prematurely, quote, "go back to normal." Please do not be swayed by the self-styled, quote, "freedom patriots" refused to heed public health headlines, protest stay-at-home orders in Madison on April 24. This was a foolish tactic, endangering themselves and others. Every morning I awake with concern for my son-in-law, an ER doctor in the Ann Arbor area. Two weeks ago, he handled his first COVID-19 death. What will he bring home with him this shift? After he disrobes and throws his scrubs in the washer, will the virus transmit to his wife, my daughter, mother of their unborn girl? She knows the risks he faces. She analyzes the number and allocation of PPE and hospital resources across the nation for a major healthcare provider system. Coping with the COVID-19 crisis demands attention with application of evidence-based policies to our convictions. Our better selves are being revealed during this challenging time. We all share those basic human values of respect for life. Let's apply those passions to the battle against this pandemic. Then let's continue in the fighting spirit to use the knowledge gained and skill learned to those goals established 50 years ago by Senator Nelson. We simply seek, quote, "decent environment" for our grandchildren, for us all forever. That is from Anne Smiley. Um, I have a little comment of my own. I would just like to extend my condolences on the loss of the athletic director, Bob George, and just wanted to extend that, um, great sorrow to his family and everybody in the Middleton Athletic Family. Thank you.
I would think the whole city council will join you in offering the condolences to Bob George. That includes me. Thank you, Katie. Anybody else who may want to speak at this time? Mike? Anyone else?
I don't have anybody else on the list, but is there anyone else out there?
Okay, so it is past 7:32, so we are going to have a public hearing of the discontinuation of the portion of Tribeca Drive. Anybody who wants to speak? This is the public hearing for this continuation of the portion of Tribeca Drive. Okay, if there's no one there to speak, I'm going to close that part of the close this public hearing, and we go on to the next meeting, that is the pandemic management, and Mike is going to start.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since the last meeting, we have received a donation of an additional 1,000 surgical masks from the Madison Area Chinese-American Association. Uh, they had previously donated 1,200 masks, including some N95, uh, from another member of the association to, and, uh, Steve Lunch is our collector of the masks and distributor of them as well through the EMS. And thank you, Steve, for doing that. Uh, this week, we ordered disposable rubber gloves for use by city staff. We have 3,000 pairs, 1,800 of which have not yet been allocated. Uh, we are converting to automated paper towel dispensers and getting rid of the manual dispensers at City Hall. Uh, we, uh, have installed Plexiglas shields at each of our, um, customer service areas within City Hall, the Senior Center, and at the library as well. So those are a few general updates. There will be more as we get into the proposal to reopen City Hall, which is next on the agenda. But Jocelyn Sansing, our library director, is also available and ready to give you an update about the library's operations.
Jocelyn. Our library director is next.
She's back. Jocelyn? You're up if you're ready.
Okay, otherwise.
Sorry, guys. Internet connection was a little slow there. Thank you. Um, so, um, to give a brief of what's going on at the library, I'll talk just a little bit about the decision-making structure, um, what we're currently doing, some of the challenges we face moving forward with planning, and then what we're tentatively planning conceptually right now. So the system structure for making decisions regarding reopening is a local decision by each municipal library board with guidance from the system along with direction and recommendations from the Department of Public Instruction at the state level that is responding and, uh, evaluating and interpreting the current orders and constantly changing information that's coming through from the Public Health Department. This includes things like, um, everything from, um, proper wearing of PP and E to, uh, policy recommendations that library boards can make regarding, um, the use of masks by the public or not. Um, so it's a wide range of things. Um, it also includes, um, recommendations for guidelines along the lines of sanitizing, uh, handling returns, and the number of people that are allowed to safely be in public spaces as we do look to reopen. So with all of that in mind, the library board, um, will take action based on all of those factors and groups of support. We've been closed since March 13th. Um, March 13th was actually a scheduled closure date for a staff in-service that didn't actually end up happening. Um, instead of the in-service, we started, uh, we scrapped our agenda, things ended up falling through, and instead we planned for closure. This has involved moving any program that we can, um, that had happened in the library previously to a virtual meeting. Um, we're utilizing Zoom along with Facebook Live and several other platforms like Instagram and other social media to deliver programs, um, and we've had a tremendous response with thousands of people joining from all over the country, which has been really encouraging. Um, we are not currently accepting returns right now, and that's kind of one of our biggest challenges along with staffing schedules. Um, we will be going through a quarantine process with returns. What normally would have been a two-time, a two-times-a-day delivery, um, throughout the South Central Library System, which includes 57 libraries in seven counties, we're now getting about three deliveries a month because things are being quarantined at the home library, they're being quarantined at our delivery site, which is located on South Park Street in Madison, and then they're being quarantined for three days in Middleton before they go out to patrons. So we're working through some of the kinks in this as we continue to offer curbside service. Curbside has been going extremely well. People have been, um, scheduling appointments online or calling in, and will continue to offer this, um, moving forward in the coming weeks. Um, in addition to the returns, staffing is becoming, um, somewhat of a challenge. Um, some of the other libraries in Dane County, most especially Madison, are looking right now at hiring freezes and planning for furloughs. While we're not at that point right now, um, and the budget has been set for 2020, we are looking at expending the 2020 budget as conservatively as possible, especially in the area of programming, which is almost entirely funded by the Friends of the Library through the majority of that, through their bookshop, which is now closed and will probably be closed into the foreseeable future. So those are kind of the challenges that we're facing right now as we look to reopening, um, along with the ever-changing information that's coming through, um, from government authorities and interpreting those for best practices. Uh, right now, we do not have a date, um, nor do any of the other libraries in Dane County at this point. Um, our mantra moving forward is really slow and deliberate. When we do move forward with press releases and information, we want to make sure that we're decisive, concise, and clear with the types of expectations that we'll be able to meet in terms of service. So when we do reopen, um, according to the DPI, we've got a five-to-six staged plan, depending on how big the library is. Right now, we're in phase one, and we're looking at phase two. Phase two for Middleton might look like only services available on the first floor, uh, perhaps computer use by appointment, um, perhaps a grab-and-go service model. So a lot of the things that we would normally encourage people to do in libraries, like sit and linger and read, um, to read the newspaper, share it with your neighbor, um, to browse and really handle materials, a lot of that is probably not going to be, um, available right away. Um, we will be going slow and deliberate. Um, we have things like the, uh, sneeze guards on our service desks. Um, we're slowly integrating staff back into the schedule as we begin to start handling returns and forming a quarantine process for those. Um, as I've mentioned in previous, um, meetings and presentations, the Middleton Public Library handles more materials than any library in the South Central System, including all of the Madison locations. So typically, we handle, um, more checkouts and combined returns than Madison Central or Sequoia. So handling the returns, which have obviously been in people's homes all over the system, um, we want to make sure that we're doing that as safely as possible. Um, the board is also looking at what types of policies need to be updated or created in order to support staff in, uh, procedures that allow for best practices and safety, um, such as, um, requiring of masks, asking people to leave that may be exhibiting signs of illness. Um, we will obviously be following the personnel policy that was approved, um, by the council in terms of staff coming to work, sending staff home that have, that are exhibiting signs, um, of, of illness. Um, and we'll be working as closely as we can with the system libraries, especially in Dane County, so that we can be, um, as aligned and consistent as possible within each of our local jurisdictions. So that's where we're at right now, and, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I got one quick one. How many people are using the service of curbside pickup on a daily basis?
So right now, we're pulling about 800 items off of the shelf per day, and we're filling about 300 to 400 appointments per day.
Kathy Olsen's hand is up, Mayor.
Um, at the, Jocelyn, at the, too, you said you were going to, like, the first floor and have some computers available, is that right?
That's right. We know that computers, um, so many people in our community rely on the public library for their computer use, and we want to make sure that that's a priority when we reopen with most likely a grab-and-go service model. Um, our computers are fairly close together right now, um, so we might end up only utilizing every other one so that we can adhere to social distancing and then start to work in the rest of the available PCs as we can. There's also other things we can do, like check out laptops and spread people out, um, throughout the building, um, on the hard surfaces that can be wiped down. Um, we've been working closely with Mike, um, who will talk more about the cleaning services and sanitation procedures that we're taking. Um, but we will definitely, um, be instituting, um, more of a transactional type of sanitation approach in between each patron, um, that wasn't necessarily at that same level previous to the closure.
How about a copy, copiers? Will there be access to copiers? I know a lot of people use the copiers, but.
Yes, yes, we have a copier on the first floor, too. Every, all, we're able to offer all services on the first floor, um, and we're looking at that, um, as a way to re-enter into service. So that way, we're not overextending staff in the lower level, which we already had a challenge staffing in the first place before the closure, um, and so that we can really ease into working with the public again. Um, I'll say that I'm extremely proud of the staff and how they've responded to this crisis. Um, they have rearranged their home lives to be able to do storytimes for hundreds of people out of their kitchens. Um, their spouses have been really supportive, um, with their kids. Uh, they've learned new technologies. We've, similar to the city, you know, I, city iced tea department, Patrick Williams has been amazingly supportive with creating and writing code and new software for things like the curbside pickup. Um, we are really looking at this as, you know, I know we're all sick of hearing the words "new normal", but we're really looking at how can we move forward as not only resiliently as possible, but what will library services look like moving into the future? There's things that we know we're not even able to anticipate yet, and that's why it's more important to go slow and be deliberate with those services, and we can always add things in as we get the hang of things and move forward rather than jumping in full force and then having to take things away or not being able to sustain service.
I love that plan. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jocelyn? Okay, so the next one is Senior Center Director, Demi. Demi?
Yes. So much of what I'm going to talk about sort of corresponds a little bit with some of the things that Jocelyn has said as well. Um, as you know, the Senior Center has been in shutdown since mid-March as well, and our focus really has been led primarily, partly with our relationship that we have with the county. We are considered to be a Dane County focal point, um, which means we're also part of Dane County's emergency management plan in that we operate the nutrition site and we provide case management services. So those two things have been our main focus, um, since the beginning. We knew we were going to have seniors who may have food needs. Um, we knew that we were going to have seniors that may have emergency food needs, may have financial needs. So we've really tried to focus on that area primarily. Um, just to give you a little bit of an idea, for the month of April, we delivered 1,132 meals out, uh, to Middleton seniors. We also are in the process right now of delivering out emergency shelf-stable meals. Uh, each person on our delivery list is going to receive 20 shelf-stable meals, and this is coming to us through Dane County. Um, we've been making phone calls. We called every person that we could reach, uh, within our database and on our mailing list, um, and we were able to, uh, find some seniors that way who needed additional assistance. Um, and so that was very beneficial. We also have two case managers on staff, and they have identified a couple of hundred people from their lists that they've been in regular contact with as well. Um, throughout the process, we've really been in contact with not only Dane County. Um, we've been in contact with senior centers from across the state through the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And last Friday, we were on a phone call with the National Council on Aging. Of course, as everyone knows, we have the most vulnerable population, um, that, at the senior center. So we want to make sure we've got those really good cleaning protocols in place. Um, any approach that we take is going to be very, very slow and very, very measured. Um, I would anticipate, and, and I would say this as it is a fluid situation, so, um, it is ever-changing. Phase one, I would imagine, would go through the month of June for us. And phase one is really where we've been since mid-March. So phase one would be continuing on providing our meal service, continuing on with the case management services, but possibly adding some very limited one-on-one-by-appointment meetings at the Senior Center. Um, however, we would not allow folks to come in during phase one and just decide they're going to stay, you know, sit down and spend the whole day. Um, you would have to have a reason for coming in phase one. Uh, phase one will go also by availability of other organizations that we partner with. Um, and by that, I mean, one call we're getting really heavily right now is about foot care. But we have to wait for the foot care professionals, um, to come back to work and come off of furlough in order to be able to do that. So right now, that's really looking like it's going to be later on. If things progress, uh, plan-wise, we would think probably in July, we would be at activities that are 10 or less people. We would limit our participants to the first floor of the Senior Center and kind of keep that lower level closed because there's not a lot of good air circulation down in that lower level. Um, as August progresses, we would very, very gradually, barring all of this goes as planned, begin to open up to some larger programs. Um, we had a very active travel program planned this year. All of those trips have been canceled with the exception of one remaining one that's out there for September. I have my doubts right now whether that one will go, um, but I'm holding out hope. Um, I think it is important, the, the word "hope," I think, is very important for our seniors um, in that socialization is so important and loneliness is such an important, um, you know, thing to fight for seniors. And so I think it's important for us to provide that hope that, yes, we are hopeful that things will get better and that we will gradually be able to provide you with the services that you're used to. No one should expect to come to the center and play cards anytime soon. So I want to be pretty upfront about that. As you know, the Middleton Senior Center does have a large contingency of card and game players, but that probably will not happen here for several months. And I'm very proud of the staff that we have as well, so I want to mention that. About half of them have been still at work because very early on in the process, we sent all of our volunteers home that we rely upon to pack meals, and so our staff has been doing that in lieu of not having the volunteers. And about the other half has been working from home. One thing that I think is a positive, when we start to gradually reopen, I know it has been talked about in some of these phases that it's appropriate to stagger your staff a little bit. We're pretty good shape that way because we do have a number of part-time people. So we have people in, people out, so there's rarely everyone in the, in the building at the same time. So we're going to be optimistic and hope that each of those phases happens as we anticipate they do. If they don't, then we have the opportunity to slow the process down. And throughout it, I think we're going to be evaluating program by program, and we're going to be evaluating risk by risk, and we're always going to err on the side of caution as this progresses. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Tammy? Thank you, Tammy. So as a mayor, I'd like to offer a few comments here. I'd like to commend our library director and her staff for preparing to open, as well as the Senior Center Director for all the plans for opening up the senior center. I would also like to commend Mike Davis and his staff for making all those plans for opening up the city hall. Hopefully, this coronavirus, coronavirus pandemic will be under control soon. But until then, please follow the physical distance, stay safe and stay well. I would also like to say that we have the best first responders, the firefighters, EMS, and our police department. I want to say thank you to those. And you may not beware that Lori and her staff has been already preparing for the election in August and November, and I hear that there are about eight, eight thousand people who are asking for the absentee ballot. So thank you to Lori and her staff as well. So the next item is item number two, that is the proposal to reopen the city hall, Mike Davis, the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, as we've been talking, the library and senior center and city hall is the safety of our employees and our customers. That's the number one priority. And I have gotten great feedback from staff, from the mayor. Susan West has participated in our staff meetings talking about setting up our plan. Sean Sowsky provided a public works plan as well, and Sean's plan is included in the packet. I call it the addendum to the, the reopening plan that, that I have before you. So this is a general target date. But starting Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, and through Sunday, July fifth, that we would only be open at city hall for scheduled appointments for in-person meetings. And if at all possible, we will try to conduct business, continue to conduct business by email, by phone, and by Zoom so as to avoid as much unnecessary personal contact as possible. Electronic and mail-in payments are available for our various permits with the city. In-person meetings would be limited to our conference rooms and the council chambers so that we can also minimize the cleaning and disinfection that will be needed on a regular basis. Public meetings will continue with the, the use of Zoom and the call-in options. City Council and Plan Commission, as is the case now, are live-streamed, and we have them open for in-person attendance as well. And we may be able to expand that depending upon the availability of the council chambers for additional public meetings, possibly for Conference Room B for a very small committee meeting. But we, we have the council chambers set up in a physically distant manner. Conference Room B could probably hold no more than five people. Employees who have fever or other symptoms of COVID- nineteen will not be allowed to work. We'll maintain adequate supplies of soap, sanitizer, and encourage proper hand hygiene among our employees and the general public. Sean Sowsky gets into more of that with the public works annex, excuse me, appendix. We're going to require employees to wear masked, mask coverings when physical distancing is not feasible in the work environment. So if we're visiting one another, or if we are in a meeting within the building, or if we are meeting with the public or helping somebody up, out at the, at a desk with the public, we'll be wearing our masks. We'll also be requiring that for our visitors who make appointments at city hall during this first phase of reopening. We'll be following the proper wearing of face masks and providing guidance to employees on that. There's a YouTube video that's embedded within the policy. We're asking, again, the customers to bring their own face mask or covering. And then, moving to the next phase, which now a target date would be for Monday, July sixth, after the holiday. We will conduct a hygienic evaluation by an environmental engineering firm. It's recommended by the finance committee to the council this evening. The timing of that will probably depend on just how much traffic we've had at city hall from May through the month of June. We may want to push that back a little bit further to take advantage of their service after we've had some, some foot traffic through the building. So we'll hire a special disinfection service. I've asked SerPro for a quote. SerPro recently did some disinfection work for free for our police, fire, and ambulance vehicles. We'll reopen then, again, July sixth is a target date for that next phase. In the access areas and the administration, public works, and public lands reception areas where we have the plexiglass shields, we'll deploy our custodial company for more regular hours during the workday. Currently, you see them typically in the evening after hours, but they have the ability to dedicate two people full-time throughout the workday that we can rotate between the library, senior center, and city hall. The library most likely needing the most service of those three buildings. By signage and floor markings, we'll lay out six-foot distances for people throughout the building, like you see at grocery stores and commercial retail currently, so that we have that in place when we open by that phase. For cash transactions, asking people to place cash on the counter and then doing the same thing when cash is returned to them. Signage will be all over the buildings. We'll remove unnecessary touch points that cannot be sanitized between uses. And programmed events in that stage will be limited to ten persons at a time in any given space. So, for example, if we have a public hearing at city hall, we will need to use those markings in the hallway for people to stand and wait their turn if we don't have sufficient seating within the, the council chambers. And then staffing of city hall will continue to be managed by remote work for employees able to do so, and we will rotate employees so that we have staffing in each department, but that it will be minimized and will use those who are working remotely as we are now. And I will say, I think we've done really well, having been closed and still accomplishing a great deal. I give credit to our employees for carrying out the work and doing really well with it. It's been a whole new technology, getting used to Zoom and recording Zoom meetings and putting them on our YouTube channel. But we're gradually, I wouldn't say we're getting close to being experts, but we're doing better with each meeting. I see Susan West has her hand up. Susan, do you have a question?
I have a comment and a concern, and Katie alluded to this in her letter from her citizen. When staff are in public places, i.e. outside of their office, they should have on a mask. So if they're simply leaving their office to go to the restroom, they need to have a mask on because if they sneeze somewhere, say, for example, really, or cough in front of the door, that door is going to be contaminated for quite a while. And no one, whoever comes behind them won't know. So having a mask on all the time except for when you're in your office, I see, is essential. I also would really like to encourage having plenty of disinfectant sanitizer at every person's workstation so that they can easily use it. And as the consultant during the financial process was talking about, isopropylol is one of the best disinfectants to be using. It's safe on materials. It's not harmful or corrosive like bleach is. So if we can use lots of that and have it available, it's easy to just have a spray bottle and spray down the surface and let it dry. And that's the real standard for disinfecting from coronavirus. But I strongly want us to have masks on in any public area. And we should also have clearly posted the signs, the number of people that can be in the various conference rooms. Those are rather small rooms with limited ventilation. So if you're in there for a few minutes, it's not a big problem, but the length of time you're there, if someone is infected, increases your likelihood of getting infection. And we need to keep in mind, people are shedding virus for several days before they develop symptoms so they can appear perfectly healthy and cause infections. So those are my concerns about this.
Thank you, Susan. Oh, great ideas and concerns. I'm sure Mike would take those into consideration.
Susan's been advising throughout, and I appreciate that. She's giving us free consulting advice, so thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have, this is Katie. I have a, a client who's a chemistry professor at the university, and one of the things that they've been very focused on is the rate of, let's see how I put it, the air exchange rate. So how often per hour is the air totally changed in a room? So if your HVAC people can help you with that, if it's anywhere from two to six times in an hour, it's really helpful for keeping people from catching other, other people's germs.
That's incredibly important.
Is there anybody who can answer that quickly, Sean or Gary? Okay, in any case, that should be kept in mind and see if we can improve on it if we need to.
I will tell you that I've had a conversation with Todd Parkes, our building facilities manager, electrical inspector, and he said that the airflow is sufficient, that he does not recommend opening the windows because of the, the air circulation is sufficient within the building. At times, I wonder about that, but I will take his advice on it. But he's also concerned with energy consumption by having the windows open and, and the cost that that would engender as well.
Okay, we move on to item number three, proposal for engineering, environment, limiting hygienist of TRC. Who is going to take it? While we discuss that, the finance made a meeting.
Finance committee made a recommendation.
Okay, so.
Sorry, sorry, I was on mute. I'll move approval as recommended by finance.
Second.
Okay, that was, Mark made the motion and Dan and, no, was it Luke or Dan?
Ramsey.
Oh, Dan Ramsey made second of it. Any questions or comments?
Looks like Susan's got her hand up.
Yeah, and this is, this is the proposal for the environmental, going in and seeing if the deep cleaning is acceptable.
Yes.
I'm going to keep harping on this. We can go in and have it deep cleaned and have it tested and it'll come back perfectly clean. And as soon as someone that might be infected walks in and sneezes or breathes, it's contaminated again. That could be the next day. So I just want us to be aware that, yes, we're spending lots and lots of money for this, but it is no guarantee that the building is clean. It's going to depend on each and every one of us or each person that's in there wearing their face mask and washing their hands, those, and disinfecting surfaces. That's what's going to keep everyone safe.
Yes, thank you, Susan. And it is, I think, a comprehensive proposal because we have the environmental engineering testing after we do the major disinfection of city hall, the library, and the senior center. But a big component of that is their expertise in walking through the building with our custodial crew in each building so that the custodial crew understands from an environmental engineering professional what needs to be done and how it needs to be done, and make sure that they're using the appropriate materials. The, the other aspect of that is that after a month or so, we would bring TRC back to retest those same three buildings who all have a high public traffic and to then walk through again with the custodial crew. I see Dan Ramsey has his hand up.
Yes, I, yes, I just wanted to, Mike kind of said what I wanted to say, which is that one of the things we get from this is we get some cleaning protocols that this company will give to our, our custodial staff. So it's, I think that we get value that way, too.
Thanks, Dan. Kathy hit her hand up.
Was this based on the city attorney approval also? Was there a change that he needed for this?
Yeah, the finance recommendation was with the city attorneys.
Okay.
Final review of the contract.
Right, perfect.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to commend Susan. I think she does have a valid point. We can do all the cleaning and then somebody comes there and sneezes. But, you know, I guess, I don't know, that's no easy way to control it. They are good points, Susan. Any other questions or comments?
Wear a mask.
Yes, another good point. Okay, if there are no other questions, comments, I'm going to follow the question, although in favor of the motion to approve the proposal for environment, leading hygiene service with TRC, say, aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion was passed unanimously. We are on item number four. Authorization to open the aquatic center to the public.
This is Robert. I would make a motion to authorize to open the aquatic center to the public.
Second?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to-
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that as, as, as we discuss in finance, there's no clear date yet. So I would ask that we amend the motion to open at the discretion of Rebecca Price, who can better judge when it's appropriate to open based on her availability or her ability to get the pool in working order for the summer season.
I will, yes, I will accept that friendly amendment. Thank you.
And so.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the, any questions or comments now?
Yeah, I would like to commend Rebecca for putting together just an outstanding plan. And she's got it, she's working with Dane County in their proposed phasing going forward. And some of the things that we've got, we've got a unique pool where we've got a big, huge concrete apron, but lots and lots of space. So by simply taking away all that furniture, we can ensure we've got good social distancing. And it's outside, there's UV light and sunlight and heat and plenty of ventilation and chlorinated water. So I see this as a relatively safe place that we can at least have children, adults starting to feel a little bit more normal.
Kathy also.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. Rebecca, in your memo today, you had listed lap, lap swimming, and that could be eight people, but it would take two staff. Is that something you're planning on doing or?
We have it proposed. I think part of it came down to how we were going to move forward, how the council has decided to move forward. If our ultimate goal is to close the gap between income and revenue, or between revenue and expenditures, it may not be the most feasible. That was because of the guidelines that came out with respect to having one person per lap lane.
Right. I just didn't think it seemed, having eight, eight patrons and two staff was quite a good turn on revenue. Also, we heard from the Gators, someone speaking on behalf of the Gators today. What do you see happening with them?
Well, with the Gators right now, the challenge is that, one, you have eight lanes over there, so we can have eight people in the water, so to speak, during that time. The other question that came up two weeks ago, when you asked me to come back with income and expenditures, is that you wanted to have the smallest gap. So if we look at it from that standpoint, it is better for us to offer swimming lessons during the time of Gators practice because we have a limited capacity. We can't do both at the same time. The other thing is that we cannot hold swim meets at this point. There are some teams within the conference who are looking again at opening later. All city has not made a decision overall, but more than likely, we cannot, they can't have swim team in the same sense because one, competitive sports technically are not allowed at this time. And two, swim meets would exceed capacity amongst other things. They're not. For us at the pool.
So Gators is not looking like it's going to happen based on what the recommendation is from Dane County. This is not, I don't think this is, the indoor pool, do you know offhand if that's going to open?
It is not going to open. I have email from, no, because the school district, all facilities are closed through the end of July at the school district. I have an email today from the pool director over there because obviously they have staff that are at work this summer. So they are displacing people because that is not an option for this summer.
Okay. And like in finance, this, I'm very cautious about this and it's, I'm, I'm going to vote against it because I just don't feel that this is moving too quickly from my comfort level. So, all right. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Well, I guess I would like to take a few moments and just say a few things. I mean, we're listening to a lot of the policies, procedures, other things that we have going on. And I guess I want to take a step back and think about, here in Dane County, we've had really the strictest rules throughout the state so far. And Dane County, the public health, so it's Dane County, it's Madison and Dane County Public Health, they have been just such a great partner to work with, constantly sending our department information to try to make the best possible choices for our community. And they've asked for a lot of, a lot of feedback, and they've looked at a lot of different things to try to ensure safe options for people throughout the course of the summer. Myself and Matt, we have been looked to, to advice on how we think we can open and do the activities of a parks and recreation department, including offering the opportunity for people to swim at the outdoor pool. So think about how this can be an opportunity. You, everyone so far has mentioned the concerns about loneliness, about uncertainty, about the different needing hope, something. And I really just want to emphasize how important this is and that we've got some great guidance from the county, from the state, from the CDC as an alternative for people, an option for people to be able to recreate. So maybe they get respite, maybe their kids get to be out. We often employ a lot of staff that are really looking forward to coming back to work because as people have mentioned, Mark mentioned, you know, your kids are going stir crazy. They miss people as well. And I think we've got some great step-by-step and a lot of things that have been considered to try to do this safely.
Understand.
Robert Burke has his hand up.
Robert?
Okay. Yes, I also want to thank Rebecca Price for taking such a wonderful leading role here, following the science. You know, the CDC is saying that chlorinated pool water is very effective at killing the COVID-19 virus. Nothing is ever risk-free, and I totally understand when people have concerns. But I would say that right now, the science is saying that while nothing is completely safe, this is one of the safer outlets that we can have for people to be outside and active this summer. And I'm going to support that. The other thing I guess I just would like to mention, I think a few of you know that I'm also on the board of a different local pool. And that other local pool is doing everything they can to also open. So this, I would just to pass on to people that, you know, Middleton's not here in a vacuum. A lot of the other local pools in the areas are looking at their own particular situations and trying to figure out ways to make it work for them at each individual pool. But I, Middleton would, would not be alone in, in pursuing opening up their pool this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else?
We have a, we have a couple of hands up there, Susan West and, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the other one.
Emily's had her hand up longer than I.
Okay.
So call on Emily.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. You know, I, I'm so excited at this proposal. I, I did, I did tell my kids about the Lakeview splash pad not being open after our last discussion, and my daughter cried. She's like, but mom, it's summer, the summer's coming, and what are we going to do? And I was like, well, there's the pool. The pool might open. And I have to tell you, it was like night and day. They got so excited. And even my husband is like, the pool, we can go to the pool. We'll go to the pool. So part of the reason I'm sharing this is I'm that mom. I'm that mom that needs to get out. My kids are those kids that need to get out. Sure, there's tons of other kids that generally don't go to the pool that would be loving to have that opportunity this summer. I, I have two quick questions for Rebecca. The opening, I saw the handout today. I didn't see it on the screen. It was talking about phase one, phase two, and phase three. Can you kind of just like in a one minute go over that? And then two, can you go over the, how much of membership fee would be for the pool if that was to open? Because I'd like to sign up today.
Okay, Rebecca.
Phase one, phase two, and phase three, we are using the guidelines from Dane County, Madison, or Public Health Madison in Dane County. And basically, phase one is indicating that it can be 25% of your maximum capacity at the pool. Things that we're looking at, we already have rules in place about how we need to clean. We need, we are looking at directing traffic. There'll be limited use of showers. There'll be no pool furniture. And basically, looking at for phase one and phase two, a lot of similarities with that. It's more so when we get towards phase three, when we can have a little bit larger group and we're allowed to have, have more things. I guess would be the best way to describe it. But really trying to be fairly conservative because what we're offering at, we want to stagger. We don't want to just go right bam to 25% capacity. We want to stagger and we want to gradually get there. We want to make sure that the staff, as well as the people who are coming to the pool, understand the rules, can follow the rules, the guidelines that are being put forward and why they're so important. We've got limited use of locker rooms. Wearing of masks is directed or suggested to a certain extent. Mask wearing is not suggested in the water. It's also not suggested when you're doing physical activity. So looking at those things, a lot of things we already have in place at the pool. We already have to post maximum numbers. We already have to do rules. We already have some pretty stringent cleaning. We're doing a little bit more of it. Phase three, I'm not sure we're going to get to this summer. I would think that we're going to kind of bounce between phase one and phase two for a majority, if not all summer.
Okay, good to know.
Phase two is allowing for up to 50% of capacity. Again, I wouldn't just go, oh, let's open the floodgates right away. We're looking at phasing it in. So it's, it's a safe return.
Thank you, Rebecca. Susan, you have a, your hand up?
Yes, I, I think I'm going to be with Emily and sign my grandchildren up for this summer. They normally go to the Hawks Landing Pool, which is a very enclosed one and very tightly, it's enclosed and the chairs are close together and no place for people to spread out when they're out of the pool. By having this so spread out, and just to reassure Kathy, when you're in the water, there's enough chlorine there, which is bleach. Those, the people, the swimmers are cleaner than any of us when they're getting out because they've been in this water that's disinfecting. So I frankly would feel much safer there than going into City Hall or a grocery store or Costco.
Thank you, Susan.
I've been on a lot of national calls, Susan, and the CDC representatives agree with you that most of them would rather be in a chlorinated pool than other places.
Yeah.
Susan, did you not see my proposal to have a pool at City Hall?
No, I didn't see that.
That was right there in the reopening proposal.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make one other comment, mayor.
Yes, Mike.
And that is, you know, we, we have so many limited options for recreation this summer, and kids in particular do. And I think this is great that the council is endorsing opening the pool. I, I remember having young children myself and how antsy they would be to get out and about. And then this kind of controlled environment, it can be the, the most safe thing you can do all summers and have, have that kind of an option. So I appreciate your support for it. Kathy's got her.
Yeah, I have one comment and I have one comment and a question for Robert. The comment is, we're basing our percentages not just on the chlorinated pool part of this. You're talking about the grass area and all the other things. I'd feel more comfortable if we were talking just about the percentages based on the chlorinated pool part of it. And then Robert, do you know when High Point's planning on opening? I know we talked, Goodman Pool doesn't have a set date yet. I was just wondering if you know when High Point is going to get opening.
Sure. It's, it's up for grabs as well. We're, we're really hoping to start basically June 1st. But it, it may be a little bit before, more likely a little after. That, that date is in flux, but we're moving forward with having this open up, start of June.
Do you think they'll have a swim team?
Realistically, probably not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, thank.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to authorization to open the aquatic center to the public and giving the timing option to the city staff. Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those who are opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes seven votes. Okay, we are on to the approval of consent agenda. It has two things, come across the minutes and other audit of the bills to debate.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was written by Dan Ramsey and second by Kathy Olson.
No, I think that was Susan.
I seconded it, Kurti.
Okay, I apologize, Susan West. So, okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, and we are on to the agreements. And the first one is the water management system maintenance agreement with Damming Way LSC. It's a PPD parking lot expansion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dan Ramsey and second by Susan West. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, one comment from me, my name is, I don't know how many of you are aware, but PPD is expanding in a new location on Damming Way, and that's what this is for. So it's not for the, the larger existing location, but it's for actually a third location in Middleton. And they are planning to grow there, I believe, 200 employees early on and perhaps even more over the next five years.
Yeah, the plan by the end of the year is for them to add, at least it was, 400 employees in total. 250 there and 150 also in Middleton. So this is a great project. And any other questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion was made by Dan Ramsey, second by Susan West. This is the storm water management system maintenance agreement with Damming Way, which is with the PPD parking lot expansion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to the budget, item number one. The asphalt road bed repairs, and this is for the engineering services.
No, actually, this is, I'll move approval as recommended by finance, which is for conceptual approval of, of the estimates for, for alternative A.
I'll second.
This is really, so you got it for the approval of the concept A, yes, so. Any questions or comments?
This is Robert.
Yes, Robert.
Uh, just the comment, just for anybody who's wondering, there were four different prices for options to try to fix this bridge. We're choosing the least expensive. The most expensive was a full replacement, and that just is not warranted at that, at this time because in the future, they might need to widen the road or anything anyway. So we, really the best option is the cheapest option that gets us a good bridge for about the next 15 years.
And that's option A, Robert, right?
That is option A.
Any other questions or comments? Larry, do you have anything to add or say?
No, I don't.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, all those in favor of approving the capital, we roll. all those in favor of approving the capital road bridge repairs, option A, this is the concept here, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. The next one is the source of funding for engineering services agreement with Emmens and Oliver sources for floodplain scenario modeling proposal.
I'll move approval as recommended by finance to identify tid three as a funding source.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark and second by Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so any questions or comments? This is a very important study, and we need it. So all those in favor of the motion to prove the source of funding for engineering services agreement with Emmens and Oliver from tip three, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We are on to item number three. Authorization to utilize 2020 general contingency funds for costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic response.
Move approval?
As recommended by finance.
Motion by Mark and either second?
Second.
And that's second by Dan Ramsey. Any questions or comments? The motion is to authorize the, authorize to utilize 2020 general contingency funds for costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic response. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We are on to miscellaneous items, item number one. Dane County Resolution authorizing a taxation district to waive interest and penalties on property tax payment installment due on or after April 1st, 2020. And it will affect about $5,000 in interest. So you need a motion?
This is, this is Robert. Motion to authorize this as recommended by finance, I believe.
I'll, I'll second that, but just so everyone knows, the, the authorization from finance was to recommend that staff create a resolution so that it would be consistent with the Dane County resolution as well.
Okay, so Larry, is that okay with you?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? So the motion is to have a Dane County Resolution authorizing a taxation district to waive interest and penalty on property tax payment installment due on or after April 1st, 2020. And making the modifications so that it's better agrees with the Dane County Resolution, Mark? Is that what your amendment was?
Well, it's a City of Middleton resolution to make a match.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to the ordinances. Number one, which we are going to defer because it's going to go to the Plan Commission. So need somebody to defer the ordinance redoning lands from B3 to PDD, GIP for Trotta on Palmetto Apartments, 3001 to 3101 Palmetto State. And you already probably know that's why it's going to defer, that they're going to make some changes.
Mayor, Mark Opitz has his hand up.
Mark, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. The reason I wanted to speak is because I learned late this afternoon that the developer is now looking at a building that is 43 feet, not 42 feet, which is, I don't know if I directly said 42 feet. But originally, they were proposing 40 feet. Then they said they might need to go to 42. And now, based on their geotechnical work, they're looking at 43 feet 6 inches. With a small part that's a decorative architectural component would be at 48 feet. So I, that's why I felt this should go back to the Plan Commission so that it's, so that there's a full disclosure of this. And plus, the Plan Commission has to approve the GIP anyway. So that's why I recommended the referral. But I wanted you to know that the height is actually different than what is in your staff notes.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? Yes, Susan?
Well, I would just move that we refer this back to Plan Commission.
Okay, need a second? Okay, so the motion by Susan and second by Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
This is, this is, actually, this is Robert.
Yes, yes, Robert.
I'm not on Plan Commission. I would just ask those who are to question certain things. Real quick, one minute or less. I know that we're trying to keep our building heights down, and I appreciate that and want that to happen. But I also don't love the idea of putting a multimillion dollar hole in the ground for parking in our city, which tends to have high water tables. So if there's at all a chance that we can limit the amount of tiff that goes into this by having floor, basically, ground floor parking rather than underground parking, I want to, I want to be on the record as recommending that, because my vote in council in the future may be tied to some of that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a very good comment, Robert. And it did come up in these Plan Commission meetings. And, and I guess I didn't carry, but that is, that's the excellent point, with which I agree. So any other questions or comments?
Kurti, I agree with Robert, and that's an area that is known to have a very high water table. It's, in all the discussions, it's been very problematic. So ground level parking is probably the best issue there, even if it means raising the building a little bit. But Plan Commission needs to make this decision.
Thank you, Susan, and Mark Opitz, I hope you're taking the notes here. So any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is to refer it back to Plan Commission. All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Now we are on to item number two. This is the ordinance amending general implementation plan for Triton Auto Spa 3509 Tribeca Drive.
I would move approval of the ordinance amending the GIP for Triton Auto.
I will second that motion. This is Robert.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Motion by Dan and second by Robert. Any questions or comments? This is going to be a fancy call, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion for the ordinance amending GIP for Triton Auto Spa 3509 Tribeca Drive, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. This is one of the Van Nuys project as well. Resolution number one. This is Resolution 2020-18, locating a portion of Tribeca Drive.
This is Robert. I would make a motion to vacate the portion of Tribeca Drive as reckon, recommended, I believe, originally by Public Works.
Okay.
In other words, to approve the resolution.
Oh, or, or we could approve the resolution. Thanks, Gary.
Okay. Okay, need a second.
I'll second Dan.
Okay, Dan will second it. Any question or comments? They were going to have a parking along the road, and that's eliminated, so. Okay, any questions or comments? The motion 2020-18 is locating a portion of Tribeca Drive. All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We are on to item number two. This is the 2020-27, approving sewer utility 2019 compliance maintenance annual report. And as you probably signed the report, they are all A grades in all various categories, four points. So they have done an excellent job.
This is Robert. Motion to approve the resolution, approving the sewer utility compliance maintenance annual report.
Second.
Okay, motion by Robert, second by Susan. Any other comments? They have done a phenomenal job, and congratulations to that department. All those in favor of the motion proving sewer utility 2019 compliance maintenance annual report, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the committee appointments. I will say a few words here. So I have worked very hard to complete the appointments to the committees and commissions. With coronavirus situation, it has been very challenging. And I really appreciate your patience and understanding of this one. The committees, which I have completed so far, are public works. And we have one really outstanding replacement for Bob Hopeful, who was there at least for well over 20 years, maybe 25. And the person that will be replacing him would be, he was the president of the largest engineering firm in Dane County with 800 employees. And the second is the airport commission. Third is the CLC. And the Plan Commission, which is confirming one of the members who was up for new. Pleasantville Golf Committee, again confirming Tom Scott there. Public Safety Committee, confirming the people who were there before. The Sustainability Committee. We have one really outstanding member joining. There was one member who didn't, didn't reply, didn't want to continue. So and then the Tourism Commission, that's essentially everybody who was there before. So these are the committees which I'm asking for approval, and the others will be coming up at the next meeting. So it is the Public Works, Airport Commission, CLC, Plan Commission, Pleasantville Golf Committee, Public Safety Committee, Sustainability Committee, and Tourism Commission.
Can we take each committee individually?
So Larry, we can do that?
Of course.
Okay, now that's fine. So let's take Public Works.
Is there any reason we can't do these all next, at the next meeting? Or they have to be done tonight, or?
All right, Larry?
There's, the, the way the ordinances read, many of the appointments do terminate in May. But they, they also contain language saying that people serve until their successors are appointed and qualified. So I, in my opinion, it is permissible to delay these appointments, and the incumbents will continue to serve in those offices. Excuse me.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, we typically do all of them at once, right? I mean.
So we've done it different ways, different years.
Kathy, are you?
I would make, I would make a motion to defer these until we have the full slate of all the committees next, at our next meeting.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Okay, and, okay. So motion was made by Kathy, second by, by Dan Ramsey. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? The motion to.
I have a question. I, I have a question with Susan. Susan was asking if we could take it committee by committee. Can I ask, Susan, were you thinking of that right now? Or are you, like, are you looking for a full list? Trying to?
I am happy with doing each committee by committee, and getting these done, the ones that have been, you know, where there's a appointment, getting the new person in so that we're back on schedule the way we should be. We're already, this should have been done second meeting in April. So we're already late on approving committee appointments.
Well, how many meetings were, you know, right now, we're only having essential meetings.
Right. I don't, I don't understand why we can't do these now, and then we approve the others later.
I, I don't, I don't recall ever doing them one at a time.
We, um.
It's been.
Yeah.
This is Larry. Been done before.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay, so the motion is to, any other questions or comments? Motion is to defer for the U meeting. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so could we have a, so you're a calm motion?
Aye. Carl?
Luke?
Nay.
Burke?
Nay.
Nay. Alvin?
No.
What?
No.
Alvin?
Nay.
Nancy?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion is. It's two seconds. Okay. So let's go to the Public Works Committee. That's the only one change. That is.
Which committee, did you say?
Yeah, the Public Works. I'm just going to go in the order.
Oh, okay.
And this is Mr. Stumpf, Stumpf is replacing Bob Hopeful.
Kurti, did Bob Hopeful not reapply?
Yeah, he wanted to step down, yes.
Okay. He hadn't mentioned it at the last Public Works meeting, so I wasn't sure. Then I would move approval of Carl Stumpf for Public Works Committee.
I'll second that.
Uh, this is Robert. Our two other people are being reappointed. Do we want to take each person individually? Are we doing the whole committee?
No, no, it's, it's the whole committee. It's the whole committee, not each person. No, no, no. It's the whole committee, not each person, no, no, absolutely not. So it's the approval of the committee as it is. Is that your motion, Susan? You made your motion?
Yes, I will change my motion to that. That was a mistake.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and we'll give this second.
Emily?
Okay, so the motion by Susan to approve the appointments to the Public Works Committee, and second by Emily. All those in favor, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Next one, we're going to move on to CLC. It's actually confirming all the members who are already there. So there's no new appointment.
I would move approval of all the CLC members.
This is Robert. I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the nomination or approval to the CLC, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to Plan Commission. That's only. So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to Plant Commission. That's only only the appointment of one Plant Mission member. So that's Mike Slavish. So need a motion to approve the appointments to Plant Mission.
Move approval.
This is Robert. This is Robert. I'll second that motion.
So the motion by Guy and Nancy, second by Robert. All those in, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is Pleasant View Golf Committee. It's again confirming the appointment of Tom Scott.
I'll move approval. This is Mark.
I'll second.
Do I? Let's see. There's a blank. There's it's not.
Yeah, there's a blank. I'm trying to find the person who would be, most of this committee is just from one area. So which is almost district two. So I'm trying to find some people from the from the other side of the Century Avenue. So that's why it's blank. And I think I will find one, so.
Why are we approving this if it's not a full slate of people, citizens? Wouldn't we wait for this one for next, the next meeting until we can find someone?
Well, I I don't want to, this is a very important committee. I don't want to just appoint. I have the candidates, but one of the, I do like to meet them and I have talked to one of them, but I do want somebody, I want to represent the whole city as much as I can on most of these committees.
I agree, but I'm just like, this is not, I mean, this has got a, this has got a big hole in it yet. And we have other committees that we're waiting on for the same reasons.
Can I make a friendly amendment then to say, can we just approve Tom Scott, who is the only one we have a name for right now for Pleasant View Golf Course Advisory Committee? And we're not really approving anyone else anyway, but it would allow us to approve Tom Scott. And then that would require us to come back to this at a later date.
Right. Being reapproved, reappointed, he's already would normally just roll forward till next month anyway, so.
Is that okay with you, Mark?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion confirming the appointment, the appointment of Tom Scott, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's Tom Scott is confirmed. The next one is the Public Safety Committee. These are all those who were there reappointed, so.
I make the motion.
Thank you. I need a second.
I will second. This is Katie.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Sorry, sorry, before, this is Robert. I do wonder if is it typical that we would have all of these expiring in a two-year period? I see, I see that either people are going to be their term is over in twenty-one or twenty-two, and I'm used to seeing more of like a three-year.
This is a two-year committee, so that's the appointment for two years, so again.
Yeah, this is Larry. Several years ago, I examined all of our ordinances relating to committee and commission appointments. And I was hoping to come up with a uniform method so that everything was done the same way. But I abandoned that project because we did have a wide variety of appointment methods. And as a result, I want, I didn't feel it was within my role to say, well, this committee is appointed this way. This committee is appointed this way. So I gave up on that. And so it's, you're absolutely right. This is one of those where logically it would make sense to have three-year terms with people being appointed every year, but we don't.
Um, I'm on this commission or this committee and we did have a lot of turnover, so that that could be part of it too. But I would just like to note that under the Public Safety Committee, the Chief of Police is no longer Chuck. So please change that name for the future.
Yep, that should be changed, so. Laurie, you would take care of that? And also I wanted to say that.
Thank you, Laurie.
The Tom Yost is replacing one of the members there, so. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Perdi, after we vote on this, I would like to make a motion about looking at the committee terms of membership and getting that, referring it to license and ordinances to get it standardized. But that's after we vote on this.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of this motion to approve the Public Safety Committee, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Larry, do you have any comments? You said you started to work on those and Larry always did put a lot of work into it, Susan, but I guess we send it back again, but.
I would be very happy if a committee of jurisdiction over this so that there would be supervision and each of the many, many policy decisions inherent in the different ways committees are appointed could be examined systematically. And that's the real reason I gave it up. I didn't feel I could just unilaterally take this on. So I think that that would be great.
Susan, we're asking about Public Safety Committee or all committees?
I'm asking. I'm asking about all committees because we've got several when I went through looking at the list where in addition to this one, there's some others that don't have staggered appointment times.
Okay, so the ones that we're approving tonight, these people are getting approved for the term that it says that we're voting on tonight. I mean, if we're going to make any changes, wouldn't we want to do that before we?
That would take too long because this is going to take several months, I have a feeling, to go through all those ordinances and get them collated and be sure everything's consistent.
So when would you want those changes to take effect during the middle of their terms?
No, we wouldn't make changes. The changes, well, actually, I'd like LNO to decide that. My suggestion would be to change the ordinances and then the next time there's reappointments, we'll get it corrected.
That's how it would work anyway. No one would, no one's gonna lose their job.
Larry, how about if you first come up with some proposal and then let's talk about it, so. So Susan, is that okay with you? Let Larry come up with something rather than just referring to LNO.
No, I think Larry.
Because I've already worked on this, I know pretty much what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna summarize all of the various ways that committees are appointed and give LNO the chance to decide what it thinks would be the right way to do it. I mean, there's differences of staggered terms. That's not the only difference, let me just tell you.
Right. So Larry wants us to refer it to a committee that will direct him come up with a proposal. And this is the way LNO works on all of these legal things. They refer it. They discuss it and ask the city attorney to come up with something.
Right, so we would wait, LNO would wait until after all the committees have been appointed and approved by council.
Yes, this, yeah, this is separate from what we're doing now.
So Susan, could we wait? And let's move on to the Sustainability Committee and here they say just one new appointment, one person decided not to.
Perdi, could this be, I'd like to get this, could we put this on the next council agenda?
Yes, Mike, could we put it on the next council agenda? Mike?
What's the issue you want to put on the council agenda? Standardizing committee?
My motion to send to Ellen, referring to LNO standardization of the committee membership and other issues associated with committees because there's discrepancies throughout.
There are.
I don't know if I would call discrepancies, but that's different, so.
So.
Okay, so.
Isn't that something that you? So I understand. Can't you refer it to LNO tonight?
Perdi doesn't want to do it tonight. That's what I tried to do.
Could we go through the committees, Mike, and then maybe we can? Also, it isn't, does it need to be on the agenda, Larry, or not?
Referrals do not need to be on the agenda.
Since we already have a motion and a referral, why don't we vote on that and then we can move back on to the committees?
Okay.
Did you make a motion, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second Susan's motion.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? This is to refer the standardization of the committees to LNO and then to Larry and further on.
I have a question. Wait a minute. Great, I have a question. I would, I would like you guys, when you, when this goes to LNO, for a look at the committee to committee appointees, specifically parks or public lands. It's a little bit inconsistent with the way that other committees put members on other boards. Specifically, I believe the Planning Committee, or I'm sorry, the Parks Committee Chair is the automatic member of planning. And that's a bit inconsistent with other committees on the way they assign them. And so I'd like to have you, the LNO, take a look at that as well to standardize that process.
Is that okay with you, Susan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's something LNO, LNO will take an overall look at the entire thing and I can tell you right off the bat that it'll probably be a project that takes several months.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I hear the motion again, just so I know if it's to look at or to actually standardize them? What's the motion? I'm just thinking like tourism, they're one-year terms, and if you're looking to have everything standardized, would I don't know if that's, makes sense.
Well, you are the.
But that would be part of our discussion.
That would be part of the discussion.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to hear the motion, read back what the motion is.
So what is the motion? Laurie, you got the motion or not the motion?
Do you want me to restate the motion?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I would move that we refer to LNO to the issue of looking at all of the committee membership structures so that we can be sure there is a reasonable consistency. They do not have to absolutely match, but at least not having all the terms expire in the same year.
And including.
And including, and including appointments from other committees, how those are made.
Absolutely. Okay, got it.
Okay, so everybody knows the motion now. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm going to go to LNO, so. Back to Sustainability Committee, there's only one change, so.
I'll move approval.
Okay, Kathy, may the motion need a second?
Second.
This is Katie.
Katie seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the appointments to Sustainability Committee, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Tourism Commission. It has a one person who did not respond yet. So and I have pointed out those who responded and I sent another email to Pete Johnson, so. Either you can wait or you can inform the ones who are appointed, so.
Well, we can handle it just like we did for, which one was it, Public Works or?
Public Works.
Public Works, and then we can bring it back for that last one. And also the staff on here should be Laura instead of Stephanie.
Okay. Okay, so let's take that change. So Kathy, you want to, that's your motion, need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Dan.
Okay. Any, okay, motion by Kathy and second by Dan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passed. Now we're on to the last item, probably the easy one, right? So this is the airport commission. So they say, they say only. Yeah, so this is rather a difficult situation and so this is the appointment to the airport mission. So what I'm recommending here is pointing Cynthia for one year term. So I want to share with you that I had more emails for this particular nomination than all other appointments over the past three years combined. Most of the email were from District Five, District Six, and the town of Middleton. And they all were supporting a nomination. I knew there was some opposition, so. So knowing that some folks were not happy with her, I did sort of compromise and had some discussion with Mike as well that to recommend her only for one year. And during that time, we will have a master plan move forward and hopefully that should take care of a lot of the controversy. So the citizens who are favoring our approval is District Five, District Six, and the town of Middleton, as I said before. So I think no one is perfect. Cynthia Richardson has her own shortcomings and I have spent hours and hours and sleepless nights on this particular decision. And so that's, yeah. So need a motion to.
A quick question for Larry. Larry, are the, do the ordinances as are currently written allow for this one-year terms if indeed it's only part of a kind of a full term?
Well, this is one of the more ambiguous of the ordinances that would certainly need to be revised, but section two point oh eight sub two does provide for one-year appointments.
And I talked to Mike and I just thought this is a good compromise, so it's not a, she has served only one year, so it is not the full term history, so it's, that's where we are at, so.
I have a question for you, Larry. So she's up for nomination for the commission, but she's also on the advisory subcommittee. If she was rejected for the commission, does she lose her seat on the advisory committee?
I don't think so unless she was officially an airport commission appointee to the advisory committee.
She was not.
Okay, so then.
Yeah.
She would not lose her spot as on the advisory committee.
There she's, here she's citizen appointee and on the providing AMPAC, she was because of being a county.
I can confirm that's true. I have the memo that was recommended from the airport commission to the council.
Who was recommended from the airport commission to be on?
Ray Faye.
Okay, thank you.
Ray Faye is the airport commission member. Cynthia Richardson was from the town of Middleton.
So she would stay on the town of Middleton on the AMPAC committee even if we don't reappoint her to the airport?
Yeah.
This is Robert. I am going to make a motion to approve the Airport Commission nominations.
Thank you, Robert. You need a second.
This is Luke. I will second that. Larry, I have a point of order. If someone, if this, is it possible to make the opposing motion at this point?
You could make, you could make a substitute motion. You could make a substitute motion, for sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we reject the nomination of Cynthia.
I second that motion.
Okay, so the first motion was by Robert, second by Luke, and then the substitute motion by Mark and second by Katie Nelson. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. This is Kathy. I also, I'm sure we all received a lot of emails on this, and I would vote to approve it. We it's not, it's not bad to have difference of opinion. I know that she might, what we're hearing is it might be a little extreme, but I think it makes the committee stronger when they have to defend their positions to, to someone. I think it, it makes a stronger argument on the, she's one person. It's not like this is getting stacked in opposition of the airport or the master plan. And I, I think that it's okay to have difference of opinions on committees.
This is Dan, if I may make comment. While I generally support the mayor's right to appoint members to committees or commissions at his sole discretion, I think in this case, it's inappropriate to have an elected official of a neighborhood municipality as a member of our Airport Commission with all the biases that she brings to that, or any neighboring elected official would bring. So I am not in favor of her reappointment.
Yeah, so Dan, to answer a question, she's appointed as a citizen, not as a town chair. She's appointed as a town chair to the AMPEC, so that's true. But, but.
That, that's, that's, that's a difference without a difference.
I would like to speak. Kadee, ma'am, I have received many, I have received many emails from my constituents of opposing her reappointment, but I've also attended both AMPEC meetings and Airport Commission meetings. And the two entities are looking at very different issues. And she is incredibly disruptive even at the Airport Commission meetings. I used to serve on the Airport Commission. It does really good work. And I'm finding it, it's, her behavior is inhibiting what can be, what needs to be done at the Airport Commission. And it's wasting a ton of time along with irritating a lot of members on the committee and citizens watching. So I can't support her. Now she will still be on AMPEC and can bring in all of her opinions as an outside person from the town of Middleton for the master plan.
Any other questions or comments?
This is Katie. I just wanted to say I concur with both Susan and Dan. It's one thing to have different opinions on committees, and we all do. It's quite another to take up staff time and money to deal with extra controversy. And, you know, it's, we own this airport. Middleton owns the airport. It's our job to figure out what we have, what we need, and then open it up to other communities. That's my opinion. Thanks.
This is Emily. I received a lot of feedback over the last six months about these committees with the airport. And today, I've received so many phone calls, emails from constituents that are very upset about this. I cannot support Cynthia.
Okay, I guess we already know the votes, right? Or we can, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in, well, we've voted everyone call vote, so all those in favor of the motion to reject the nomination. Okay, Laurie, you want to?
Wait, which, which motion is this?
Reject.
To. The substitute.
Larry, it will be the substitute motion that we are voting on, right?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. The substitute.
So we are voting on it. We're voting on a motion to reject our nomination, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
So it is to reject the nomination, so. So if you say yes, that means you are opposing her. Okay. So Oropah. auction.
No.
Azara?
Nay.
No.
Stone?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
So the motion passes five today. So, so Larry, that's, it just needs a simple majority?
Yes, and then you now get to appoint someone else.
Okay, so the motion passes and Cynthia Richardson's nomination is approved, so we need a, is there anything, well, we need a motion to adjourn.
No, I think you have youth commission and zoning board. You have appointments for those.
Well, if they're not finished yet. I'm still making the numbers, so. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
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 Well, have a great evening. Thank you, everyone, for.